I would like to start off by thanking everybody for joining us for our second round of candidates from District Six for the Orange County Commission. The people joining us today are Nikki Mims-McGee, Rosemary Deal, and Michael Scott. And we are going to spend about forty-five minutes with some questions that address some of the most important issues for Orange County and for District Six. This race will be on the August twenty-third ballot. And if no candidate gets fifty percent plus one of the vote, the top two vote-getters will go on to the November ballot. So with that, I am going to go ahead and get started. Let me do this real quick. Okay, all right. Last Tuesday, the Commission discussed and in part past a series of measures entitled to deal with what has been described as a housing crisis in Orange County. Do you believe? Obviously, there was, what was passed was a notice period for adverse decisions for renters raising rent or being evicted. And what is coming is a possible Tenant Bill of Rights and a possible ballot question on a rental. It's being called stabilization. It's actually a rent cap, a rent cap on rent increases. And so I'd like to start by asking, do you think the Commission's headed in the right direction? What do you think of those proposals that have been discussed and what has been passed so far? And what more do you think the county should be doing? And so that's a big bite for the first question. And let's start with Rosemary Deal. Rosemary Deal?
Good day, everyone. In answer to the question, I do believe they're going in the right direction. I wish that they were moving a little bit faster. I understand that right now it's considered we are in a housing crisis. However, I work in the real estate field for over eighteen years and I see it more firsthand. And I do believe it's more of a housing emergency. So when it comes to Tenant Bill of Rights, I do have that as part of my plan as next Commissioner to work on that. I do agree with the rent stabilization. I also know that if you are spending more than thirty percent of your income, you're actually spending too much money and now you become in what they call struggling. So I would definitely continue the rent stabilization with the understanding that it's actually an emergency. And if they would put that in place as an emergency, I do know there's a state law on the books that automatically it would go into place for at least one year and the rent cannot go up higher than five percent. So my outlook on this is I believe it's more of an emergency than a crisis when you look at everything. Thank you.
Ms. McGee, you said you prefer Ms. Mims.
Ms. Mims-McGee is fine, yes ma'am. Thank you for the question. So my thoughts are is that the county is moving in the right direction with the Tenant Bill of Rights as well as putting forth some type of adverse protection against those landlords who are over and beyond the threshold of a reasonable rent. However, regarding the stabilization prong, we really have to make sure, because there's two sides to each story, we really have to make sure that it's going to pass legal muster. And one of the issues is that landlords have an economically viable expectation to their investment, which means if they go buy a home in the community that has cost them now an inflated price of, say, three hundred thousand dollars and their overhead is, just say, you know, with their mortgage, with the insurance, with putting a tenant in to now renovate, they have to recoup somehow. Although it may not be economically feasible for one tenant, it may be for another. So I think that with moving forward with the stabilization, we have to look at the landlord's side of view, not only just the tenants, but there do have to be things in place to protect the tenants to make sure that they're just not getting arbitrarily ripped off by landlords who want to come in and make a huge profit. More so just covering their ends, which we understand that they're in the business too. Of course, a lot of these are second homes or, you know, second investment properties. So we want to make sure that it is safe, you know, on all measures. But I do believe the Tenant Bill of Rights, I do believe that some type of adverse, you know, protection that will then show any landlords who are just going over and beyond the threshold, they will be, of course, whether it be, whether it be that they are, their licensing or something of that happens where it keeps them from going over and beyond. But I do feel that the county is moving in the right direction. But I do feel like there has to be a little bit more teeth to be able to actually make it work for everyone.
Ms. Scott?
Thank you. I echo the sentiments of the other candidates, like they are headed in the right direction. Definitely first good steps. But even with the sixty-day notice, it says sixty-day notice for five percent increase. It doesn't stop them from increasing it more. You get what I'm saying? So like for me, I work with youth and families. And more recently, there was a family I've been working with. They changed owners. And I believe they got the notice on the twenty-second of August, this is, no, of July, that the ownership had changed. On the twenty-seventh of July, she got the notice saying, hey, we're the new property owners, et cetera, and we're going up on your rent. Rent was six hundred dollars, now it's eleven hundred dollars. You know, it was low income, now it's no longer income. And so there's nothing there to kind of bridge that gap. So even if there was enough notice, you know, she doesn't have the job or the resources to get a job in two months to be able to even prepare for something like that. And so for me, I've said it to a couple of other folks as we spoke before. I think it's going to require a very intentional dialogue, not only between, you know, the tenants, but also the landlords. Because people who buy properties, whether it's a multifamily dwelling or duplex or an apartment building, they're buying it, as Ms. McGee said, to provide for their families. And so it has to work both ways. Because if the property owners can't maintain their business, then they'll fold. And vice versa, if the tenants can't pay their bills, then they'll move out or they may likely be homeless. So I think it's going to require a little bit more of a dialogue. But I like where the county's heading, at least with the notice.
One of the things that many communities are doing is looking for innovative ways to repurpose, redevelop, reimagine spaces as affordable housing. One example would be in Seminole County, they're looking at potentially, sorry, potentially redeveloping Seminole Town Center Mall. I would like to know, what opportunities do you see in this, in the county or in District Six to create more, to increase the inventory of affordable housing? And let's start with Mr. Scott.
So it's not limited to the county. But the county, the municipalities, the state, they have lots of land, lots of buildings that they aren't using. And so for those vacant buildings, I think that should be converted to temporary housing where feasible. I think for some of the land, it may not be slated for use or development for a certain period of time. Also allow maybe some type of transitional housing. But I think it's using our existing resources as it relates to government to be able to provide housing opportunities for those who need it. But also looking into more public-private partnerships. We have to be able to talk with the business owners and see where the give and take comes into it. It goes back to, you know, the previous answer that I had as it relates to having a dialogue. You have a lot of people who are talking about, hey, I can't pay my rent or my rent is too expensive or it's gone up too quickly. And that's more on the tenant's side. It really is a whole community conversation, the tenants, the landlords, the government, to figure out what works best for all parties. We certainly need to increase our inventory. And I think the quickest way to do that, at least for a temporary stay, is looking at the properties and the buildings that aren't in use, that are vacant, that can provide, you know, at least some temporary housing for the tenants and people that need it.
Ms. Mims-McGee?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the question. One of the things that I'm very interested in, in just kind of getting rid of the crisis of affordable housing and building. As a daughter of a contractor, I believe that we begin to look at the blighted land and the vacant land that is already in the county, much like the Seminole project that's going on with the town center square, where a developer has come in and taken, you know, the Macy's or the Diller's building and turning it into affordable housing or housing. People are now wanting to think of new ways of being, whether it's condo owners or homeowners. Another issue that we have is the zoning. The zoning, we need reformation in our zoning. A lot of our laws, a lot of our zonings that are on the books does not allow for us to build single-family homes. So I think that doing something as far as inclusionary zoning in those areas that will now allow for the builders, the contractors to come in and be incentivized for building in these areas will also help to aid in creating affordable housing for our communities. If the builders can't come in and they can't build because the zoning is outdated or it says that, you know, it's only for multipurpose or for some other type of projects, then we are left with our hands tied. So I think first we streamline lots of that zoning issues that we're having that will not allow for us to do single-family homes or even apartments or either homes at all. I think that we start there. Like I mentioned, just, you know, vacant land, blighted land, unused property, abandoned property. And we go throughout the community and we target those areas. And then lastly, we look at the hotel and motel infrastructures as well, like we did over on Ambassador, the building over on OBT, where we, you know, repurposed a hotel. And people are willing to live in a place that is comfortable to them. And we're taking an already existing building and making it a fully recovered place where people can enjoy to call it home.
All right, Ms. Deal?
Well, with the rezoning, it's absolutely right. We in Orange County do not have our land properly zoned in order to build tiny homes or modular homes. You could go to Lake County and you could buy a modular home. However, you cannot do it here. We have a lot of land that is empty, that is just there and nothing's going on with it. It's easier to build on clean land versus an abandoned home. However, abandoned homes are another option as well. I hate to sound redundant, but pretty much, you know, it's the six, seven points that I would like to share has already been mentioned, which is abandoned homes, using empty lots, as well as rezoning for the tiny homes and the modular homes. The multifamily, it could be built more like a duplex or larger versus one single-family home on a piece of land. There are apartments that are falling apart. I feel that, you know, if a new development came in, that only could they fix it up. But perhaps we could even take some apartments and build a little bit taller. So we have a two-story. How about do a four-story into the community? So that would bring up more places for living versus if we don't have the land. So we do have to look at other options in case if land is not available. But in District Six, there's lots of land that is available, but it's no buts. It's just looking at what we have and what else we could do. And as far as developers coming in, is my time up? I'm sorry. No, okay. So as far as developers go, it's up to them like where they want to buy the land and purchase and build it up. But the hotels, motels, those are reliable options where they can be used as more permanent housing. And all these options that I mentioned, I am looking at permanent housing because we need to be able to fix our emergency situation we're in. Thank you.
This next question started out as a question on the county's role in containing urban sprawl. But as our panel answered it, it morphed into a discussion of the impacts that future development patterns may have on District Six, including a danger of gentrification and a fear that District Six would end up becoming even more packed with social service agencies and other and subsidized housing without the infrastructure such as supermarkets, livable, walkable spaces to support them. So I kind of find that to be a more interesting question. So I will just ask you, as Orange County grows, what are your fears for District Six? And how do you see those development patterns impacting the district? And let's start with Ms. Mims-McGee.
Thank you for the question, Ms. Chris. So particularly one of my greatest threats that I feel is for District Six is that because we have had the lack of growth over the years, there's a lot of talk about gentrification, especially in our historically black communities. What's more scarier than gentrification is ghetto-ification. And I use that term very loosely. And what I mean by that is the fear of not wanting to bring the neighborhood and the infrastructure up to par. And I particularly mean that because there is a lot of concern that in the community, investors are coming in, particularly to the historically black communities, and buying up the properties and buying out the individuals who live there, which is a very, very, a very huge concern that I have as, you know, as the hopeful next county commissioner. But however, one of the things that we do have to consider and we have to look at, as things grow up around the communities such as, you know, transportation now, you know, you have the walkable, livable areas where you can have grocery stores and shopping centers and malls. You are going to bring an influx of individuals in. But now the main purpose is to not only stabilize the individuals that live there and that love the community that they've been in for years, but it's also making it accommodating to those who are going to live in the same community that they work. We're going to bring businesses into these communities that are going to be the supermarket, supermarket store owners or, you know, store managers or restaurant owners and things of that nature that want to live in the same community that they serve. So one of the biggest threats that I feel for District Six, because as I mentioned, we've been one of the ones, one of the last districts to kind of get the, and I'm comparing it to the Horizon West and the Lake Nellinas of the world. But we've kind of been the last as far as with infrastructure and building and housing and affordable living, that as these things come to the community, that we have to look at keeping it the same that it's been for the last thirty and forty, fifty years will be more of a likely threat than bringing in the amenities that we need and we deserve, such as the banks and the supermarkets and the new restaurants and the malls. So my thoughts are particularly, you know, gentrification as well as, you know, just keeping with the mindset of ghetto-ification, of not having that new infrastructure in place of these old historical communities within the district.
Okay, and I was not looking at my time, so you've got a little extra time. So I'm going to give the same to your opponent. So it's, and it's a big question, so two and a half minutes, I think. And I will then go next to Mr. Scott.
Can you repeat the question if you don't mind? I mean, I followed you when you were explaining, but if you can repeat the question, I appreciate it.
Basically, it started out as a question on containing urban sprawl. But as people answered it, it morphs into a question of the threat that, or the impact that future development patterns could have on District Six and what that means for the community in terms of potential gentrification and in terms of the lack of services such as grocery stores, other retail professional offices that other districts have that the District Six right now does not. And so if you talk about the future of District Six, the development pressures on it and what the Commission needs to be doing in District Six.
So the future of District Six is in District Six, the residents, the businesses that already live here. And when I say that, I'm talking about just really investing these people who know the community, know its needs and the things that they don't know, educating them about the things they don't know. I'll use a personal example for me. And granted, this is not necessarily a county thing, but it kind of gives you an idea of the mindset. So I live in Tangelo and I can't tell you how many times a month I'll get a text message or an email or a phone call trying to buy my house from multiple different businesses, right? But aside from that, recently I went to ORMC. I wasn't feeling well and I had to wait the better part of, for about four hours. So I wound up going to another Orlando health facility in Horizon West. I was the only person in the emergency room. I walked right in, great service. And not saying that, you know, how the hospital manages their resources. I know there's a nursing service, but things like that. I think that there needs to be more investment in the residents that live here from an educational standpoint, something as simple as a Valencia or Orange Technical College, but also just about how the processes are. The neighborhoods that benefit the most are the neighbors that are involved in the process and also the neighborhoods that understand the process. So I think the onus is on the Commissioner and the Board to say, hey, this is what we're trying to do in the next five years, ten years, twenty years, et cetera. You know, what is your input? I think that a lot of the infrastructure improvements that should happen, that haven't, is really just because, for lack of a better word, there's a very small pool of individuals that know what's going on, know what the future is going to hold as it relates to District Six and the surrounding areas. And it's not shared with the everyday person who it's going to impact, like things with the Lynx bus. I was fifteen years old. I caught Link Thirty-seven coming up by OYSI, going to Universal for my second job. I think just investing in the citizens and the businesses that are here.
Okay, Ms. Deal?
Thank you, Chris. It's a great question. I would like to say, I have been out here in a campaign, speaking with a lot of future constituents. And we have touched upon this particular topic. It is a very important topic to the neighbors here in District Six. And as far as gentrification go, we are banded together to be neighbors against gentrification. So we all do not want gentrification in our community. We want to keep it more like a village-like. We know it's going to be growth coming in. We just don't want it to be overtaken over. So what can we do to ease those fears? I feel that we need to be able to get out ahead of it. For instance, supermarkets, we don't have that many supermarkets. Like our Publix kept moving until finally it came out of District Six. People still like to shop at Publix. When Dixie is so few now, that's not even an option. But even Whole Foods, stores like that, the community, we need those stores and those supermarkets. And after speaking with them on the ground, my neighbors, our neighbors, they're okay with having the supermarkets coming back home. They want that walkable, livable community where they can just leave their house and walk around the block. Or even some of them joked around having a golf cart, you know, right here in our community and to be able to leave their car at home with gas prices being so high, to be able to drive to a store and get what they need and come home. So the fear is real. However, once you start speaking with them and you start explaining things to the neighbors and sharing what can be done to make their lives better, their fear eases when they know that you are actually in their corner and you're going to be fighting for them and you're not going to be working for someone else behind the scenes. But instead, you actually have their needs first and utmost. So families are very, very important. We need to make sure that there's no overdevelopment and it can be controlled somewhat. Like right now, we know Pine Hills Road is zoned up to three floors, three stories. So as a future Commissioner, I would want it not to be like a fifteen-story that shows up on Pine Hills Road. That is something that the neighbors are concerned of. And I believe in a position as a future Commissioner that I could put in my votes in reference to what the community does not want to have. So we do need to contain the urban sprawl. They want it, the growth, they want amenities, but they don't want it to be overpopulated like a used city. So the neighbors that I have spoke to throughout District Six, they share, they understand they have these needs as far as like social services and other agencies. But they want more of that land to be for convenience, for shopping, more parks where maybe they could ride their bikes, walk their kids and be able to play. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The next question obviously is, and you knew I was going to ask about this one. In November, Orange County residents are going to be asked to approve a penny sales tax on the ballot to be used for transportation, including transit, and some road improvements and expansions and safety measures. So I would like to know from each of you, do you support this? Especially given the current economic conditions? And do you, and what safeguards or guardrails do you think need to be put on it if it passes? And let's start with Mr. Scott. Thank you.
I'm kind of for and against it. So I'm for it because it's absolutely needed. I have kids that, you know, catch the bus and sometimes what should be a thirty-minute wait turns into a forty-five-minute wait. And that presents challenges from not only the kids, but the people who work a lot of low-wage jobs. And so, you know, you miss the bus, you know, and that in force is not going to be a concern. You're going to likely face progressive discipline and potentially lose your job. So Lynx and a number of issues definitely need to be addressed when it comes to infrastructure. But I just think that overall, it's the timing. This isn't the best time to ask people to pay additional taxes. And if it is, I felt like it should be one in the same. The city, sorry, the county has aggressively promoted this half penny sales tax. You've seen the different town halls and town forums. And it only recently has rent control or low-income, low, I'm sorry, affordable housing has been a topic of conversation. And so I just feel like, you know, the same energy and zeal that's being used to promote the increase in the sales tax should be the same energy and zeal to use to, you know, really address the housing need of the people there. Because if you're going to ask me to pay additional money for roads and things, you know, I think you'd see a lot more interest and a lot more engagement if there was that same type of energy directed towards how do we address the housing. Like I said earlier, the county is headed in the right direction with the measures that they voted on. But I just think there just needs to be more done and done quicker. So that's how I feel about the half penny sales tax.
Okay, Ms. Deal?
Thank you, Chris. The one cent's penny tax. I agree and I don't agree, so I'm pretty neutral on that too. I'm leaning to more yes than not. I did speak to a lot of neighbors in reference to this as well. And I am also getting mixed opinions back to me. I do know transportation, we need help so bad. I see my neighbors, you know, running for buses. And if they miss that bus, the next one is in an hour. And so they have a potential of losing their job. And we already do have a housing emergency going on. And it just does not help if a person is losing their job because they cannot get there because of transportation with a bus running once an hour. I have actually had a meeting with Lynx in reference to that because I was interested in where are they going in the future if this one cent doesn't, it doesn't get approved by our voters. And they told me they did have plans to move forward to make adjustments with or without the one cent. However, with the one cent, it would help them to be able to do more. So I requested, or I put in my input, that we should have at least every twenty minutes transportation for our neighbors. So if they miss one bus, they won't be that late to be able to get to work. So I think it's extremely important that Lynx is in line with us. And that's why I had this meeting to make sure that they were thinking like the neighbors are, that it's very important and not to leave it to once an hour because that's unacceptable. I am concerned, this is my no part. I am concerned when it comes to District Six, it appears that we are being overlooked. That is unacceptable in my book. We should be all right in there together. So I like the roadways and the sidewalks improvements, but I would push for that language to change. I would push for more safeguards and safe rails to make sure that everyone is included and no one is left out, that we are all treated equally. I also would push for more pedestrian walkovers. We need to have that. We have dangerous areas where we are having people getting hit and killed. And still, there is not even any striping put down to a And still, there is not even any striping putting put down to assist for these uh incidents. So I would like to make sure there's more safeguards in there and protections for our community once the tax is passed. And if it's not, I'm looking at other options by encouraging other agencies to please help our community to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Ms. McGee.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Flucker. So uh to answer your question in full, yes, I am for it and here's why. Chris, uh District Six has one of the largest riderships of uh individuals who are on the bus in our community. Uh, not only does this tax cover uh our safety and bus routes and and more buses and things of that nature, but particularly it will cover public transportation and our safety. So uh much as it was mentioned earlier, a lot of individuals, pedestrians, whether it's in Pine Hills, whether it's on West Colonial or Sand Lake and International Drive, which are heavily populated and traffic areas in or in District Six, people are losing their lives by not having the proper, um, you know, uh pedestrian safe crossings. And we don't have lighted areas um which are causing issues. And not to mention, um, there was a poll that was given by the mayor months ago, back in April, where over eighty-three percent uh overwhelmingly of the the residents agreed that we need to do something with our transportation issue. Not only that, the mayor also mentioned that another astounding percentage was about eighty percent plus of the funds that will be allocated in this particular initiative will be paid by the tourists. So what better way to have our citizens to have safe and 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 attainable transportation and it's in 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 crossing and pedestrian crossing and walkways than to have someone else to pay for it? It's not only coming out of the residents of uh Orange County's pockets, it's coming out of those who come to frequent us and they love the city that we that we live and enjoy in every day. So to answer your question in full, absolutely, I am for it. And by November, um, if it's voted in, I will push it forward.
Thank you so much, all of you. Um, we have actually come and and it it worked out perfectly with the questions that we were asking the previous panel. And to the to the time for closing statements. Um, okay. And um I would like to ask each of you to spend about two minutes giving us your elevator pitch as to why you should be the next commissioner for District Six. And um let's um start with uh Rosemary Deal.
Thank you, Chris. My name is Rosemary Deal and I want to be your next Orange County Commissioner for District Six. I am a volunteer president of Robinsonwood Community for collectively over ten-plus years. Robinsonwood Community Improvement Association is the thirteen largest HOA in all of Orange County. I am also a member of Pine Hills Community Council, a member of Pine Hills Safe Neighborhood, as well as a stakeholder with Pine Hills N I D, which is a business sector. Resident, as a resident of Orlando over forty-two years, I have lived this, I have lived in this area, raised my children in this area, and I continue to live in this area. I'm award-winning, proven leader within the community through multiple spearheaded projects that I have done, including outreach projects, safety, beautification, education, health fairs, as well informational to our families and our neighbors. I'm always keeping my eyes and my ears open and listening to the community. We need someone who will actually be able to see, feel and relate to the community what their needs are. I am that person. My professional work experience is combined with many uh volunteer, with my volunteer spirit. I add to my knowledge of uh being an accountant for many years, a career service director in the education field, as well as old eighteen years in real estate. With my combined education as well as my volunteer spirit and my work spirit, I bring to the table something I feel our neighbors need. They do not need another politician or someone else who's going to be making promises and not keeping them. They need someone who understands what they need and what they're living through because I actually live within the deepest part of D six. And I want to be that person that they will rally against to vote for me as I will fight for them and not big businesses, big companies, but for the neighbors as well as small businesses and help them get what they need. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And um Ms. Ms. McGee.
So District Six voters, I ask for your vote on or before August twenty-third and here's why. I am a mother, I am a daughter of a developer, I'm legally educated, and I grew up in the same district in which I'm running for. If you've ever heard the adage of you are a uh you are a product of your environment, well, I am truly that. I have owned businesses in the community. I've been both an employer as well as an employee. My children attend the schools in the community. I've also sat on the charter review board, which is our constitutional board that determines how our ordinances and things are drafted. I've done the, I've done the work through the community, I've been a part of the community. My parents have built very much of the community from the uh Orange County Convention Center to the airports, to the other areas in Orlando such as uh Universal Studios. We've built much of the sidewalks that you walk on. So you want a person that will understand not only the business aspect of running the county, but also the human nature side of being a citizen and living in the community, growing in the community, owning a business in the community. But not only that, I have the uh background of being able to read a blueprint. So when I meet with developers or contractors, I know the language, I know what they're talking about. When we are going through uh reformation or we have to put a referendum out, I know how to read the legalese of the Black Letter Law. So I say that to say you want someone who's not only one-dimensional, but you want someone who's multi-dimensional. I understand different levels of government, I've sat on the governing board. So I ask for your vote. I'm an advocate at heart, I know the community, I grew up in the community. And most of all, I know what we need in our community. I ask for your vote. Thank you for your time.
I am going to go to Mr. Scott now for his closing statement.
Thank you. Um, you have a great field of candidates in front of you and I think you'll be well-served by any of them. But um I think you'd be better served by me. I've was born and raised in Orlando, Florida, I'm an Air Force veteran. I've worked at every level of government, federal, state, the school board, uh and Orange County government specifically. Uh, my background is one of working with contracts and logistics and facilities. Uh, I've helped build a number of the buildings in the district, uh uh some of the projects that uh, you know, that better serve the community. Um, I've dedicated my life to working with youth and young adults, helping them at their lowest moments, whether it's the loss of a loved one or a a personal tragedy or education. Um, I fight for these these young people and and their families as if they were my own. And as your commissioner, I would do the same. I uh just really have a joy with just helping people. And so I hope that you'll consider voting for me, I'm asking for your vote. Um, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And um once again, um, that's a wonderful slate of candidates. So I think voters in District Six are very well-served with with the people they have to choose from. Um, and just to remind people, this race will be on the August twenty-third ballot. Um, if no candidate gets fifty percent plus one of the vote, the race, the top two vote getters will advance to the November election. Um, and it is, the people who vote in this race are the residents of District Six.